... Where I can show that all members present with exception of Alderman Pannas. Approval of the minutes from the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I get a motion.
Motion.
By Alderman Crawford, second. So I'll second all those, favor, opposed. There's no unfinished business. Um, Paragon Avenue, constituents met with Bill and I last September. I see something done. It's a narrow, narrow street. It is technically, I believe, right, Bill, an unimproved street.
An unimproved street, yes.
It is listed as unimproved street, albeit it is paved, it does have sidewalks and spots. Um, the problem is, is if you look up at the corner of front and Paragon, both houses on the left and the right, the north and south side of that intersection are both Air- Airbnb's. And then if you come back, right there underneath the words, there's no parking here, that's an apartment house. So there's a lot of parking going on in Paragon Avenue, which is making it rough for things. And a lot of the parking is congesting up from where that red line is closest to front there forward. So it's blocking off that, that intersection and choking down that deterring ability. Asking that put no parking here, the corner signs on the south side from the red line back. Tiffany, did you get a measure on that?
Forty feet and a half.
And then on the opposite end, on the eastern end, same thing. And then allow parking only on the southern side of the street and close parking on the northern side of the street in its entirety. There's more driveways on the northern side. There's bigger green areas between driveways on the southern side. And then to handle, there's an issue, it's got some grass there again, it's a narrow street. They, they do try to stay like on the pavement, but then it narrows that street right down. Didn't know if Bill, then we could maybe put Millings in that shoulder area to allow for a little bit better parking, to push them off the road a little bit better. So that's kind of what the, is going on.
Mayor, if I may, uh, I just emailed that today and, uh, I want to bring up the speed over there. And, uh, well, we'll take the trip over there. Well, first we had, then we had, right, then find out public right of ways. There's an issue with that. And then we can, uh, then we can decide, or decide if we could put Millings in there or not. So we'll get back to speed on it.
Okay, so with regards to the Millian, then we can wait for your feedback on that. But we can still move forward with the note with the parking restrictions and signs. Any questions? So what do we have to just push up for, um, does this have to be no parking?
So we noted on the first meeting in June.
Okay.
We'll see if he'll pass Tuesday and then that will be over.
Okay. John, do you need a moment for any?
No.
All right, any other new business that's gone on here? Seen none. Motion for, oh, there are no mayor reports. You'd be able to motion for adjournment.
Okay.
Second, I'll second all those, favor.
Okay.
Adjourn.
I'll call together the call order of the finance committee meeting for Tuesday, May twenty-first. Alderman present with the exception of Alderman Pannas. A motion to approve the minutes from the previous committee meeting for Tuesday, May seventh. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Minvenyan on the favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Okay. Unfinished business, we have capital fund reviews. I don't see. Oh, there you are, Len. I'm like, where did you go? Okay, because we had said, you know, we will take a few, um, each meeting just so that.
I, I put in ten, well, mostly eleven. Cause one of them, there's nothing going on, so I guess I didn't know what to do here. Um, the first one we're gonna go through is capital project twenty-nine, which is chips for city streets. Um, right now there's, we overstepped that, I went by one hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. But that's due to, um, reimbursement, we're going for the state. Um, I think the last one where I went last week, we should be getting one hundred and seventy-eight back to put in that account. If you look below, this is all the activities for that one account. Um, the left side is your all the debit money coming in and the right side is the money going out. So if you see for, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, from August twenty-twenty-three, we expended two point six million dollars and two point four reimbursement came in for the year. Um, I think the line to kind of look at, it's the first one, which is the two hundred, two hundred line, which is the cash. The other ones are just accounting logistic, like, um, if we were to have a debit, they might be a credit. I don't wanna go through those things. Um, just going to the cash, but the first one we tied.
Okay. Any questions?
Did our chips increase this year, Bill, from the?
Yeah, we did get a slight increase. I wanna say it's in the area of, uh, forty K increase.
What's that?
A forty K increase.
I, probably, yeah.
Level sixty, I'll be around.
Yeah. Given the way the price of prices have gone, maybe sixty less.
And also the one thing I would like to point out, the way that it's funded, it's strictly to reimbursement. Um, we fund the money and they back handed, they just did pay a little part.
Well, I know about that bid opening is Thursday. For this year's payment. So if you guys hear that bid opening is, is Thursday for this summer's payment project for the chips. For the chips. So is there, uh, for, it doesn't have to be tonight, but, um, Mayor, do you think you could, uh, I would assume that it's already, it's determined what streets are going to be done? Is that part of bid? So you bid that out, so at that point, could you relay that to the council so we can all kind of have an idea what streets and awards are going to be paid?
Yeah, I talked to, uh, I talked to Dave Randall and, uh, depending on the bids, and then they, they noticed one or two streets that may not get done, so depending on how the bids can get done. But yes, once we had the bids, he gets it, uh, worked out, we'll send that list around to the Alderman on what streets are being paid.
Thank you.
Alderman Robinson.
Thanks. Hey, Lenz, you said that the majority of this was, uh, cash from the state. Uh, we're one seventy-nine plus in the whole, but you, you said we're getting one seventy-eight from the state?
I think there's one more reimbursement that was done last, last week. Um, Eric told me he sent it out, so we're waiting for payments to come in.
Okay, so that'll probably be the difference there?
Yeah, that would be, that would be the shortfall.
Okay, okay.
I mean, if you look on the left side, on the bottom.
Yep.
All those new activity, the O D, the reimbursement.
Oh, okay, yep, I see.
Hi, capital project one oh two, which is a very good investment. Um, this one is funded by Ben and selling of coal, very close, that we have in some, some function. Um, if you look on the left side, we, we brought in two function and to council transfer, we brought in two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars.
So we're good with the city vehicles or we're not coming with anything, so?
That I even know of.
We didn't propose anything in the, in the, uh, budget.
Budget.
So, I mean, yes, we did, we have a new police cover, this button from the police, you know, in the police budget. But we don't anticipate anything. Now, next, next budget starting June one, we didn't anticipate any vehicles. The next budget we made.
Mayor, do we have a, and at some point, maybe over the summer, we can start working on that list of what is gonna be needed to be funded over the next five years? So if there's nothing in this budget, how do we plan on replenishing and increasing? So we've got a twenty-two thousand dollar balance here. How are we gonna strategize increasing that going forward? Uh, and what is our cash needs gonna be?
We're, uh, DPW is working on this now and, uh, anticipate having it for you within the next, uh, other Christmas. No, we never got it too busy.
Construction.
Yeah.
Yes. Christmas list.
Any other questions? Okay.
The next one is capital project one oh three, police equipment replacement. Um, that capital project is funded by a court, court fines. Um, twenty-five percent of what we get in revenue every month goes into that fund. That's how that fund gets its money. Very little goes out of that fund, it only goes twenty-three hundred dollars for it.
Questions?
So, does that come back twenty-five percent, is it justified to the surcharge to?
Justifies.
Justifies.
Or is the surcharge, that goes to the state?
Oh.
Next one is capital project one eighteen, the ambulance reserve. This one is also, uh, funded by the ambulance revenue that we do get every year. We put in, aside eight point five percent of that revenue every year into there. Um, for the year, we put in one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and they've only expended thirty-two thousand of that money. Um, I know the fire chief is not here today, but I know he got something in place where he's gonna actually get to increase that at some point. Um, so this way that would help this fund. We don't have to go out and involve money like a bank or bond to buy the next, the purchase where it was forty-five.
The next, next, uh, budget is, uh, being built now as the ambulance.
Okay.
We anticipate having enough in the funds to cover that, uh, when that's, that comes out.
We already said that's, that's all.
So Len, he's looking to increase that eight point five to a higher amount?
Well, that's what the talk was, he was looking more like twenty-something percent, but I think, I think, like the man I spoke about earlier, if we could do annual twelve fifteen for now and gradually make a portion there, um, we can go.
The chief, uh, Edith, if you recall, during the budget time, he did talk about a plan to increase, um, the percentages for there. And then by doing that, over time, we would have enough to, uh, purchase a new engine we'd need it. So he's got the plan, we're gonna, uh, we wanna get through this budget and then go up there. Because we gotta keep in mind that if we increase this, this, the amount taken out, it's on the other end, it's less going into the general fund. So we have this, it's gonna be a balancing act. And how much, do we do it slowly? Uh, you know, do we, say at eight point five now, do we go up to twelve percent? And then down the road, go up to fifteen and then maybe up to, you know, then increase there? So we can see where we're gonna be with the, with the, uh, how much is gonna affect the general budget income there too, so.
Yeah, I, I support that approach, Mayor. I think that's, that's a viable approach that honestly makes sense across the board. So you said that his, his strategy was also to maybe to create a, uh, an engine reserve account like this?
But we would.
Or this is for both fire engines and ambulances?
Yeah, we would alter this to not just ambulance, it's more of a, so engine.
Okay.
Yep. You want questions from here or?
Good.
Um, this one is capital project one nineteen, the post bus reserve. Um, that one, I don't, I don't think we have any control over that. That's, um, the pot net money for the posts. I don't know, um, it's reserved for to purchase buses for it. I don't know where we're gonna go, um, for the next couple of months, within the next six months. I'm not sure where the post service is gonna be. That's all I have for this one.
So this is for the running of the buses, not for necessarily the vehicle, but for the, for the running of the buses and the, um, contracts and the operations?
No, I think when they buy buses, they use this capital project to do that.
Okay.
I mean, all the money that, that they're putting money into there, it's all pot net money, you know, that come into that fund.
Okay.
There's nothing, it's, it's gonna be.
So it's zero value? Okay. Question?
Um, the next one is capital project one thirty-two, the parking lot commitments reserve. Um, the parking lot revenue that goes in there every month. Um, this is how that fund gets its money now. I think we, I don't know if we, that's gonna be, okay, with, with you, the mayor or the council, that's, that's something we're gonna, we could use that towards the, um, for the Q R codes, that we would do for the parking lots.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that, uh, we had our first meeting with the, you know, the parking committee and, um, setting up a, when we get to that point, a percentage of the revenue generated from the QR codes, um, obviously part of it should offset the, you know, the parking attendant or whatever you wanna call it, enforcement. But, uh, you know, I, I'm glad that we got that sticker shot to see how expensive it is to repair the parking lots that we have. One that comes to mind is that city lot by O B D. As the project goes forward and put the charging stations in there, and we're gonna be asking people to pay, uh, the lot should look like it can come out of like World War Two or something. So, you know, we should, you know, maintain and, and have upkeep to those lots. So I, I really would encourage us to consider sharing revenue, um, back into that. So I agree, Lenz, I think that's really important strategy for us.
So Len, what does that fifteen percent equate to monthly?
Um, it's fair, um, if you look on the left side, bottom, it's eighteen, started from June to now. It's fair, it depends on how much money you collect.
And those are just based off of the permits, essentially?
So, I mean, sometimes we'll have some, um, people lose their mirrors sometimes.
But mostly, mostly it's the permits, right?
Yeah.
For this, uh, just need the no enforcement money.
Correct. This is the parking permit money that people.
So if we had QR codes that could go in there?
Yeah, there's, there's current.
Motion back.
Yeah, it's working, tickets given out, I was just asking, maybe of that, knows that this?
Questions, Mayor?
This one is capital project one forty-six, the airport master plan. Um, that one is shortly banned and banned, um, like, two years ago, we should have banned to the, the runway and, and the taxiway. Uh, I think that project is done, but this capital project, I can make hoping. Uh, we do have a balance thing open, twenty-nine thousand dollars in there.
So the project's done?
Yeah, the run, the runway and then.
So is there other things in the master plan and the works were established?
I think it's a continuing, continuing plan for the airport. I think we saw, and did some type of work, um, some of them are fully funded, um, some of them not, at the airport.
Prior to COVID, it was ninety percent federal, five percent state, five percent city. When, when they started getting the COVID money, then it was a hundred percent, um, from the federal government. Now we're going back to, uh, the, uh, ninety percent federal, five percent state and five percent city. Uh, money used for our match. Now we have, we have different projects that will be coming up. The, uh, hangar, uh, is one of them. Uh, there is a, a septic system that needs to be replaced. That's another project that, that we're, they're working on now.
So for the hangar rentals and the guest cells, is that going to this account or something?
No, that goes strictly to airport revenue in the general fund. Then it's seventeen, seven, airport revenue.
Question? Okay.
Movement, also several complaints. Um, that one gets its money by reimbursement and somebody complains that they just sit it out, it's a job, and we, we bill whoever the customer and, and they pay us back. If they don't, that goes to the taxes, um, and when the economy gets old, we get the money back from the economy, back from it.
So this is essentially the DPW?
Cause I think we used to use that in one fifty-four pole project, I think from last year, we split it between the side, side watering base versus side watering pole lines.
Len, can I ask, I see on four eight, it has out for adjustment from B W B?
Um, when we did the audit this past year, there was some adjustment that I made, three ninety, three ninety-one, two two from general fund. So we had to pay the general fund back some money. And then we also had to get money from the two two, state and federal. There's one on each side, there's one for thirteen thousand dollars from the states that coming in. And the other one was ten thousand going out, um, from, to the general fund. Because we had a bunch of two 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 from that wasn't ever done, the past administration. B W B wanted us to, to get this cleared out, so that's what goes on for. And essentially we had money sitting on, capital fund money sitting into the general fund. And the money doesn't belong there, so we had to move it back to where it belongs.
So, doing the math quickly here, um, are we at negative?
No.
Or we're at zero trailer?
No, no, if you look on this task line, the two hundred line, the very first one.
Right, okay.
This is the cash.
At the bottom we had it before.
I mean, there, for, for balancing act, um, we have to put a debit in the credit all time and we have to be equal. And next one is the Brenner Stadium. Um, we do have a balance in there of seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, it was small, um, one of the reason why it went down, if you look on the Brenner side, there's a two 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 from, according to B W B, that money wasn't supposed to sit there, it's been sitting there forever. Basically, I, I kinda, I went back to twenty-seventeen, I believe. There was a two 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 from, from the prior auditor, but the money was never put it back. So B W B said that money needs to go back, so, which is why, I mean, you see that nineteen thousand dollars came out.
It went back to the general fund?
The general fund. Cause it was sitting in the capital project and he wanted us to make sure that money goes back to where it belongs so it can, uh, can solve interest.
Okay.
And I think that's what, uh.
So, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so you say there's more to go. Do you have an estimate or an idea of how much that's gonna affect this fund?
Um, not in this one specifically.
Okay.
I'm talking about for the whole.
Oh, okay.
So do we have a target for where we want that fund to be, Mayor, in terms of this project?
Uh, well, we're, we're completing the press boxes, we have that now as we begin to speak. And remember, we put, uh, because we have, we're likely a place to put the money at the time of the Vignano Fund. We put, um, we got two payments of fifty thousand and then some interest. So then gone, we've been using Vignano Fund for, uh, we used the, uh, money for Marcus Park. And we could use the money for, uh, the, uh, the, uh, chairs and that, for the pool. So, I'm, just for the Vignano areas, we're supposed to get that for the next couple of years. So. So for county purposes, if we could separate that out and establish a, a separate council, we know where that money's exactly going and what's coming out of it.
God.
Alderman.
Uh, John was actually waiting to go, so I'll let him go first.
Yeah, I just, thanks, I just was gonna ask, is this where the source of, I know, unless it's in his budget, Chris was gonna explore some shade structure at Franchot Park? Is this some of the money that'll come on?
Yeah, we, we agreed their money would come out of the Vignano.
Okay. And the, the shade structure, not the junk stone, but will be put up this year, we expect?
Yeah.
All right, yes, thanks.
What, Lenz, what is capital fund two oh four?
That's the, um, the, the Franchot Park, I think that's Franchot.
Marcus.
Do you think it's in Marcus Park or is it?
Cause that may be the some money for, um, design.
Still ours, the inclusive playgrounds.
Oh, my goodness.
So we moved the money to, to authorize the money for the design, cause I could build it at the time.
And then the, that press box project that you're doing now, Bill, that's coming out of the current budget, where you had, I think, about eighteen thousand in that plan, I think?
It was, uh, it was thirty thousand dollars.
It was thirty-six, um, cause we had, you got eighteen, it's, all the view that we're currently on and we.
That's what, yeah, that's right, so it's eighteen in this current budget here. Let me ask for another eighteen in the upcoming budget here.
Yeah, that was for, the second eighteen was for overall maintenance and the stadium.
I don't, I don't know how long, when, but what it's gonna be done, I'm not sure. Um, we may have to come to that fund block.
We have, if you, if you recall, for Marcus Park, there was fifty thousand dollars in that plan. And then the, uh, uh, design work is going on now. Uh, that bill was, uh, so we needed, it was sixty, it was about seventy thousand for that. So we needed the, the additional nineteen thousand and something. So we took it out on the Vignano Fund, so we had that paid for. Yeah, here it is, it's right here, nineteen five, nineteen thousand five hundred seventy-seven transferred to, uh, capital fund two oh four, so that's, two oh four is far, is far.
Um, there's nothing there, especially for the chief, um, when he gets back, cause there's no movement, there's no money. And it's still, I don't know what you wanna put at some point.
On which one?
On one seventy-seven, um.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
There's nothing going in there anymore, so.
So you're trying to keep the chief on there, cause we have a, a line item for that also, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, if there's, if there's no need for it, I mean, if the mayor doesn't need it, the chief doesn't need it, then I would just say, close it out. That doesn't take counsel, actually, you can just do that.
Um, we will have to, we didn't feel that.
Oh, to close it out, okay.
Budget that created is the council, it's the-
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine. Either that or redeem it, whatever, I don't know, typically reuse them or you just close it out and create some, something new?
Close it and-
Yeah, something new.
It's the same kind, it's been sitting there, it's open. And next one I added away is capital budget one eighty, that I didn't see out of it. Um, during budget time, I think, a couple, couple weeks ago, I, I came to you that, um, cause that one also, there was some two-two-two from, if you look on the left side, um, to, uh, according to BWB, that money was sitting into the debt service and that money was supposed to move from debt service to the capital budget. That those, that, this, also it's one of those many ones that we have to deal over time. Um, that money will be used for adding upgrades, I think the software, the Windows eleven and the police software, the literature. Um, I think when we were also gonna have the capital budget, so-
The police laptops.
Uh, so.
It's basically all computers, don't have the Windows eleven.
So, we will talk about the capital budget later on the call, when I say that we will not have to worry about that and that's what I'm thinking. That's plus eleven?
Yeah.
Thanks, Lance.
Thank you, well, I think that's helpful, thank you for, for working, for providing us with that. Okay, new referrals for consideration, South Union Street project, we have a couple items under that, the construction and the bid tab results.
Adrian, you wanna join us?
Come on down.
So, yeah, so we have the construction inspection proposal, um, um, from Clark Patterson Lee. For, I think, three hundred thousand was it there?
Yeah, three hundred, three hundred one thousand, I think.
So, um, they've been asking about where that stands. So, obviously, we've got the base now, we're gonna be moving forward, we need to have planning based as to handle the construction inspection oversight through the, through the next few months of that project. I believe you guys have seen that.
That's, that's not in this current-
That's not in this project, this is, this package is the big, is the big tab.
What you're talking about is-
Construction inspection is what you guys have-
Robert brought to us-
Previously.
A year ago, or whatever it was, was it about a year ago in there? Uh, with a heads up that inspection services was gonna be around three hundred thousand dollars, um, for the South Union Street project. And that it was not within the budget, correct?
Yeah.
Originally they wanted four hundred thousand, it's turned down, so. Okay. Well, I mean, question, Thomas? We gotta move forward.
It's a lot of paper.
We gotta do it.
So going forward though, when we talked about inspections and, and some of that, the goal was to be able to do some of that in-house going forward, right?
If we hired somebody.
I thought it was if we hired an engineer.
Now, we, the plan, when we talked, we were gonna hire another, another engineer in the engineering department.
Mm-hmm.
And have that person trained to do the inspections. So when, uh, when we found Ben, that changed our plan. We didn't, we did, we did not fill that position or that was not budgeted for, it was changed, if you remember. So we have, now, yes, in the future, uh, as we get, uh, you know, we're running over in our rural window projects and all that going on and, uh, Ben is, is doing the project management, uh, but we're gonna need inspection services. So, we've got, uh, we only have Dave Crandall and Ally, who's, and Dave is our civil engineer and Ally is a junior engineer. So with CHIPS going on and, and some of the other projects, we're gonna be stretched very thin. But we're not gonna be able to handle the, uh, what we need for the inspections. And if there is movement in the direction of, of the management of all of our projects, which eventually will, uh, as we get different projects and eventually that will include some inspection services out of our engineering department.
Okay, cause I thought that was in part with the, the reason for, with the hiring and that was to, to be able-
Inspection services.
Hmm?
Not with inspection services, project management, but not inspection services. We talked about restructuring different ways and it didn't go anywhere. So this is, you know, where we're at. There's no, I mean, it's, you know, it's a, it's a large, uh, dollar amount, about what, ten percent of the total project cost?
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, when we talk about having available construction budget of two point nine million, right? So that's gonna go hand in hand with the, the next conversation here. The two point nine million consists of what? Where, where is that money?
From the state funding.
Okay. So, that is, the two point nine million does not include any money out of our pocket?
No, we, uh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we, we have to front it, but we'll get that back.
Correct.
That's the DRI.
So the, so the essentially, if I'm interpreting this, what we're coughing up at the end is a three hundred thousand dollars for inspection services.
In essence, our match, if you will.
Yeah. Okay. I always like to try to make myself feel better.
If it helps you sleep at night.
We're getting, we're getting three million dollars worth of work, right? We gotta cough up three hundred thousand.
Well, and where's the three hundred thousand coming from would be the next question then, right?
Dave was gonna ask, can you give me to it, right?
Well-
Well, we're gonna have to ban for the, for the project because it's a reimbursement from the state, so that can be part of the ban.
So we banned the two point nine mill and the three hundred thousand? So how much did DRI allocate for that money for our work?
Uh, we got it up to two million nine hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty, uh-
No, you got two million nine hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-three. Is what's allocated on true DUS.
Where'd you see that then?
Just above the table.
Oh, I see it, thanks.
Yeah, just above the table, that was the first budget.
That's the DRI, no?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, in, you know, I'm the first to understand that tax money is tax money. But when we receive questions or complaints or naive comments that city tax money is going in to say that South Union Street project, three million dollars is coming from New York State, three hundred thousand is coming from the city of Olean. Um, so I think that's a pretty good, we're throwing out on an investment. Oh, we have to until the project's finally closed. So the ban lasts as long as the project day remains open, so as long as funding is being reimbursed to us, which sometimes with New York State, it takes a while. Um, and so once the project is officially over, we've gotten all the money back that we're gonna get, at that point in time, the ban is closed and you're no longer paying any interest on it.
And, but, so, and then for projects, I just, this is just my own general education, then if there was something where money was left over, that's when we switch to a bond?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Now, for three hundred thousand dollars, we probably would just pull that from fund balance.
Right.
Okay, if it was a three million dollars, then we would roll that into a bond.
So when we're, we're in the ban phase, we'll pay interest on that?
Correct, yes.
And was that about two, or if you-
Was it four percent is our?
Four point two five.
I guess, you know, it's two point nine, four percent was the how long it generally takes the state to, the DRI reimburse it. So was the projected cost, that's what I'm asking.
I don't know how long it typically takes to stay there.
I mean, I know the FAA grant, so it's turned out pretty quickly, but the state, it's, you know, it's about years. And I'm just waiting for, for last reimbursement for, to capital projects, for nineteen, for Kiel Park. And that, what, what has been done by UNA, and we're still waiting for one more reimbursement from the state.
So that's about a hundred and twenty-seven thou-
Other questions? Okay, so that-
I mean, just get, just, I'm sorry, Sam, yeah, back to your question, South Union Street is supposed to be completed in November, is that correct? So-
There'd be a rollover, a residual thing by June, majority of the work.
Okay, so, you need it to stop being residual. Now, that-
The ban interest starts when you take it, not when the job, it doesn't end when job's done, as when it's reimbursed, correct?
It ends once the work is done and you've been reimbursed completely. Um, now, we renew bands annually, Lance, is that right?
Every year we have to, if it's not done, we have to renew it, and then we have to, for five to seven years, I think, we could, we keep renewing the bond.
But as money comes in, we pay that ban a dollar. So we don't have to keep three million dollars in debt every year. So if we get, you know, by next June or whatever, we've gotten two million dollars of reimbursement, we can pay that ban down and effectively just borrow what we, we need to.
What's the city's, isn't there a percentage that these companies use as far as bonds and bands to give us an interest rate? So I was wondering, what is, what is our city's percentage?
Four point two five.
And that's for the bond, I mean, what's the city's rating as far as these companies go?
It's a triple B.
I think it's- A bond rating?
A bond rating. Double A?
Triple A.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It was double A when I was saying double, but I can look into that tomorrow.
I mean, it's, it's fairly strong, um, triple A is the best, but we're either a single A or double A, I mean, it's, it's, and it, one thing that I've learned over the years is, it's actually because we have so many assets with the city. Um, and most of those assets have been acquired through, again, we get a good bank for your buck. Here's a project of three million dollars, it's not, you know, yes, we are paying a hundred and twenty-seven thousand in interest and three hundred thousand dollars in inspection services, but we've got three million dollars coming in added, right? Uh, and a lot of the stuff at the airport, the same way, the ninety percent that the FAA reimburses us millions of dollars in assets up there. The city's contribution is, is pretty small, so when you look at your assets to, to debt makeup, it makes us very strong on paper.
And one thing, uh, with the airport reimbursement, they come pretty quickly. The state, you know, could be, uh, it could be a year.
How did the other, um, how did the-
It has to go to somebody later and, and then they have to sign up and sign off. But the one we're waiting for now is if, if you remember, we, we, uh, got the additional money because of a project that did not go to DRI. So we had, this was taken so long, getting the sign up on that, we finally got that and now the reimbursement's gone in. So as soon as, you know, that could come in anytime now.
There's only, there's one thing we should keep in mind to, um, when I get the, when I go in to get the full amount all at once, it's actually gonna be based on what we spent so far, cause I really care who have, I don't know who's gonna do it, but we have to submit clear check from our bank, so then, so they can verify, then it's paid for, then we get the money back. It's a process.
Anything else on constructions, but inspect, inspection services? Okay, bid, bid and tab results and recommendations that we need to see?
I'm sorry, Sam, yeah, so Mayor, will you be bringing forward a resolution to withdraw or the inspection services, inspections? Yes, right?
Okay. Now, bid, bid tabs.
Um, for the South Union Street state project, um, Clark Patterson Lee has taggedated everything, um, reviewed it all, uh, made, there was some corrections that had to be made and, um, we've kind of reviewed everything and, and this is kind of their, uh, review of everything, consensus and recommendation. Uh, as you can see on the front table, there was two bids, two bidders, we had Leningon Construction and DNH. I believe both of these were s, uh, same bidders on the East State Street project. Um, this project was bid as a base bid with three deducts, with the way, with the base bid being kind of the, um, selection process. In this case, all the way through, the parental bidder is, uh, the parental bidder all the way through all the deducts. So, um, obviously with the funding, uh, available for this project of two, or two million nine hundred seventy-two thousand, um, the, the base bid came in at three million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars. Um, so we're, that's, that's, that's roughly four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the available budget. Um, so we go to deduct one and deduct two, which is a bunch of paving and resurfacing for deduct one. Um, a project with deduct one and deduct two does fit within the budget of, with a, um, a bid of two million nine hundred fifty-four thousand, fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
So when we talk about the deduct, are those then gonna be our, what our alternates are?
It's a different way of doing that, the alternates are kind of adding work, this is taking away work.
Okay.
But yes, this one was kind of, the base bid was everything, the deducts are taking work away. The last project was bid, base bid with alternates to add work to the project.
So that we would come in budget? Questions? And it looks like page eight is where all those deductions start.
So, um, I, I, I support the idea of holding off on mill, uh, doing the mill unpaid. Um, I know- I know it might look a little choppy at first, but there are some additional uncertainties with regards to, what did we talk about, was it the South Union Street?
Yep, it would be like the twelve by sixteen foot hedge, kind of thing.
Cut out?
Yeah.
Line of three water lines.
The water line, something rather, right? But also the fact that this, the DOT owns that one. And we did have a conversation and, was it?
Senator Kennedy's?
Yeah, Senator Kennedy's, um, office. And, you know, eventually the state will, the only payment. It's on, you know, just like we have a list of roads, now the when, when is that gonna happen? But we're, you know, trying to work with them to, to see if the state DOT will, you know, be able to get this bumped up on the list after all this construction is completed, to, to see if they'll amount of money. The no sidewalk on the west side, I mean, we're having a, if I'm not mistaken, we went down an eight-foot Sherwood's path along the east side of that, that road, it's the main component. There still would be a sidewalk, it's just not a new sidewalk, right, on the west side, right? So, you know, given the situation where we're at, you know, I know, even when you talked about East State Street, I was kind of all game busters, that we should do all the alternates. And going home and sleeping on it, I'm thinking, you know what, let's try to, you know, be as conservative here as we can, take, you know, we got essentially a hundred percent funded project, with the exception of our inspection services, I think we should just go with this proposal.
Other comments, questions? Okay, Oliver Robinson?
I'm, I'm questioning now, what's left for three million dollars, just round it, three million dollars, what's left? We've heard a lot of cut this, cut that. We're not doing the road, so the state's gonna do the road, I can, I can roll with that one, no need to do it twice. But what are we getting for three million? We're getting half of, half of the path of concrete down the street. Uh, we're not building the west side, uh, we've eliminated landscape?
No.
The landscape is still in there?
That's, that would be if we could get deduct three.
Okay.
But given we're giving it two point nine five, the landscaping is, we would keep that in.
So, okay, so breakdown, what are we getting, maintenance terms, what are we getting for three million dollars? I, I need a refresher.
Well, we're gonna get a new water line.
Okay, so there is gonna be infrastructure? Oh, that's right, it was waste? Was it waste line? Or was it the freshwater?
Uh, freshwater.
Okay.
Yeah, we're increasing the capacity in the line there. Uh, roundabout at Green, that's probably your, a lot of your, right there. We're getting the share of the pass on the east side. We're getting curvy, incurvy. More defined parking. And as we're going to the, uh, I think we're getting a, a hot light at Franchot Boulevard, there across the-
Flash and Beacon.
Flash and Beacon. And, uh, the businesses have, uh, pretty much rolling over everywhere, going about, so there could be more defined, uh, curvy to set along there, along the whole room.
Remind me, mayor, is there a traversable median down through on the project? I remember they gave us the printout, but I don't, you don't have that?
I don't have it.
We have the traversable one over here at New York State, and then yes, that would be, it'll, it's, uh, it's not a median, but it'll be similar to what we have out here in stadium, so there will be a camphor, so that the wheels can go up onto the-
On the roundabout?
On the roundabout.
What about in the median, is there?
Oh, the median is, is, uh, we changed that to, since it's flat.
It's flat?
Flat, so that-
So we can use the barrels with, like, down at the front of the fire station with flowers?
That'll help with the deliveries and stuff, yes.
Are we still getting the, uh, lighting and ballers? Uplight, upgrade to the street by arms?
That was the East State Street, there, you look up though?
I'm looking at, well, I see Millennium, so I just made an assumption here, let me see.
Cause they got awarded East State Street.
Okay. Yeah, this must be East State, this is two point, two point one?
Yeah.
Okay. Phase three. What was this one?
Phase four?
Okay.
This is phase four.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, you have the documents here. I'm sure you wanna cruise on more.
Yep.
And we'll have kind of your questions, and we'll have this on for, uh, next Tuesday.
Okay, so that'll be next Tuesday. Okay, walkable and in phase three.
That's the bid alternates, so that's East State Street, what Vernon was just talking about.
Yes.
Because if you recall, we had to award the base bid for that one and then revisit.
Yes. So we should wait for boundary turn or?
We can talk.
Okay.
We can kind of talk about it, I mean, I- I guess I would be curious, to put the mayor on the spot, mayor, do you have any thoughts on?
Well, I know that the, the alternates were paving.
That was another one, sorry.
Paving on the south side sidewalk.
Lights?
Lights, I think, yeah. My thought would be is to just stay with the base bid, let's get it done. The paving, we can, we may be able to handle that after this project is done with the CHIPS money. So, I think, uh, the big scheme of our housing service, we move there.
Earlier you mentioned with the CHIPS funding that one or two streets may get removed from the list, so is it already planned that this may be on the list?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we may have to remove more streets in order to be able to do this?
I also want to, I also want to point out, this is actually the DOT owned road too.
Oh, yeah.
So, we brought this word up as well. The Senator, Senator Kennedy, which I, I think he's not been elected to Congress, but, uh, he was the chair of the New York State DOT Transportation Committee, and so, you know, the ideal would be, hey, would you guys pave your own roads, uh, after these, you know, we're investing in these projects and putting them into, you know, our downtown, et cetera. And I think it's worthwhile to at least have follow-up conversations and see if, you know, again. Again, we're on the list, right, so at some point in time, New York State would come in and-
I can't remember, I'm sorry.
There's three, there's three alternates for walkable, three, which is East State Street.
Okay, so the paving, sidewalk and lights.
Sidewalk on the south side.
Four alternates. There were four alternates, one base.
Upgraded, upgraded overhead lights?
The first alternate was milling paved, the second one was the trial lights and ballers, the third one was upgrade light streetarms, and the fourth one was sidewalk replacements on the south side only. I'm impressed, I can read my own scrap here, this is hard to read.
Yes, because it came in at the tiny font. Okay. So, thoughts on it, to just go with the, the base bid, not do any altern, alternates at this time for, uh, walkability in phase three? Anyone else? Okay, so I don't think there's any action we need to take on that then. Okay. Anything else here? Okay, committee reports, none, I'll make a motion to adjourn, second, I hope you're bending all favor. Pose. Okay.
May twenty first, Lieutenant Riquelcho, all, all are in the present with exception of Oliver Pennas, uh, he is excused. Make a motion to approve the minutes, maybe the second? Second by Fornie, all in favor? Pose. Unfinished business, uh, we have the two mile creek drainage, uh, if I recall, I think we were just bringing this back just to see, uh, if, uh, the city had figured out what size loose pipe they were gonna go with. If I remember right, uh, there were two different sizes they were trying to figure they would need, if they had them in stock, or if you had to order them. And then a timetable on when, where, how this will take place in the city.
Ben, do you have an update on that?
This is the trail project?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so we've got materials, we've got to do some great work, verify elevations for the trail and the little spot, and so once we get some personnel and staff for that, we'll be moving forward.
Okay. You said, why don't you get personnel and move forward? Okay, well, we can, uh, just leave that on unfinished business and, uh, maybe come back in a month and, and see where we're at with that. Uh, any other questions? Go on Facebook and you see people, uh, comments and stuff like that, and, uh, there's a lot of comments about mosquitoes already. So, and, and so I was gonna just ask the mayor, I, I know we put money aside for funding for that, for the county to spray. Is it possible that we may end up using that this year or no?
Well, not, uh, we did not put money aside.
We did not put money aside.
Uh, what we have done over the last several years is, we signed a contract, which will be coming forward, uh, to the council. We get it on for, yeah, for next Tuesday night, to sign the contract. And then, uh, what'll happen is if the county sprays, which right now, it looks like they're gonna, then we will take the money on contingency. I think it's about, I think it's about sixteen thousand something, what the contract reads, so. That'll be coming to you next Tuesday, authorized, we have signed the contract.
Okay. All right, and let me see, that was all I have, uh, does anyone else have anything to publicize?
Is that still remembered?
No, I was just gonna say something, I've been getting complaints about mosquitoes already, so.
You can't afford it?
Well, we could, the numbers walkable trails, we can afford a lot of them.
You can't afford that. Mayor, you can have them sprayed every ward except for itself.
I'm sure you're getting paid this year, or did you get them all week now?
I got them all. I know, but, just, just for your information, what'll happen, what'll happen is the, the county will go out and put traps at different locations throughout the areas, throughout the county, and in the city, and then they will, they will, uh, the traps, as they take the mosquitoes, they trap, they go back and they-
Count them.
They, they, actually, they, they, actually, they get the female ones and see what's weird, the dudes better bad, so that's how, that's how they determine whether we spray or not, and a lot of it is probably not very optional.
Why, right next to my garden, because they're all there.
I was gonna say that, you just said on my porch, because they're all there.
Or, or, okay.
All right, approval committee minutes, we have none, uh, sorry, new referrals, for consideration, we have none. Uh, approval of minutes, currently, United States has already been sprayed, and needs spraying. Uh, we need spraying, I'm not feeling that bad, yeah. A lot of tickets down there too. All right, I'm making a motion to adjourn, and I'm saying, they're all in favor?
Hi.
Pose. We are adjourned, thank you.
Okay, uh, call order, uh, youth and recreation committee, uh, seven ten, I'm making my first. Um, please know all older men are present, with the exception of Oliver Pennas. Two minutes for a previous committee meeting on Tuesday, May seventh. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead and sign.
Hang on a second, thank you. Thanks. It's, it's been a long day already. Um, okay, so unfinished business, I think my agenda, um, we have a lot under, um, Oak Hill Park, but uh, I know Ben gives an update on Fornes Park, our last committee, is there any changes and more updates? Do we have a timeframe that can be reported to the softball leagues, cause they'll probably ramping up soon?
Uh, I don't have a timeframe yet, weather's not with us lately.
Ben, do some time.
So, we've been working on field ten, um, we get some, a break in the weather right now, but it's kind of underwater again, but we can get things dried out, they'll be trying to get that finished up. The, the lighting at Fornes, uh, we've been out there the last couple of days, um, working on poles, they've got one pole up and complete, they've got a lot of the conduit work on the other poles complete in the last two days. So, but again, with the weather and some other emergency work, um, kind of, kind of a little bit problematic. So that's kind of where we are with, with Fornes.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so then on to Oak Hill Park, I had sent, um, an email out just to, so we could have a plan of action for the, um, the trees that are dead along the fourth street side, and if there was any research on the warranty, or if we have a plan to replant?
Contractor, we've been in touch with the contractor, and the contract, the original contractor is gonna replace all those trees. It's actually, they're doing it because it's actually out of warranty, but, uh, but they're gonna do it, you get the, uh, the, uh-
Arborwinds?
Arborwinds, yeah, they're gonna be replacing them.
We had also talked about the, and I ended the message, I had said the overgrowth on the Putnam Street sides, the landscaping, we had a plan for that as well, like, what can be done there to make that look nicer?
It's kind of a corner, because it's a fourth street side.
It's a corner too.
I don't know if we had, did we get that moment? They were over there and did, um, clean that, that quarter up, yes, they were in there, uh, today, we cleaned that up.
And as for the landscaping on the, along, on the fourth street side there, uh, our junior engineer is back with us now, she's on maternity leave, and she, uh, she will be working on the plan that, uh, that we presented with John Belachi, who we got her for, so we'll get that going.
And then, the last meeting, we talked about the branches and that were hanging over basketball courts and tennis courts that were causing issues or that could be a danger to people, so, means a way to get those trimmed back, and I drove by today, there, there was like a long-
Through the tree contractor.
Do we have a, what's the update on the forester, do we have a forester yet?
Uh, no, the short answer is no, I mean, we do, we do have a new employee in Parks Division that, uh, is, uh, as you said, he's certified now, and, uh, he has been helping us out, but unfortunately, he's, he's gonna be out for, for several months, cause he fractured his ankle off the job, but, uh, so, so. I just don't seem to have good luck with the foresters, so.
So we can, um, have update on that for the next committee meeting, see if that's on any, done in house, or?
Yep.
Okay, so then the last thing, anything else for the Oak Hill Park? Um, the last thing is, um, and we've talked about this again, several meetings, um, establishing the, uh, park restroom ordinance adoption. Keeping those open. Um, we have to establish a time that we want to do that, a, what they do in their municipalities, if you want to update.
So I did hear back from, uh, Batavia, Jamestown and Salmaica, um, there were two other, um, communities I had contacted too. So they actually did a variety of things. One of the ones that they, you know, one- One of the ones that they, you know, one of the municipalities said they tried to keep theirs open twenty-four seven, but they ran into some of the issues that, um, had been brought up in terms of concern, which was, um, shooting up in there and, um, having people who are homeless sleeping in it, and, you know, so they, and part of that was because their parks department was opening, the police wanted to close it, and that didn't, you know, that didn't work out so well in a couple of scenarios. But one of the, um, one of them, and actually, it's, it's Jamestown, they actually have a, a couple of things are going on, but one of the things they do is basically theirs are open from seven AM to dusk, and they said they employ a, and it's from April first, they try April first to October thirty-first, and they employ what they call during the, the summer hours at least, where this year they have somebody who is a retired school teacher, they pay a minimum wage, three hours in the evening, they go around and they lock everything up. And in the morning, it's opened up by their parks department, um, there was one of the other municipalities that they had, um, you know, two of their parks were actually staffed, uh, during kind of work hours, um, with people that just kind of monitored the parks. That was kind of their, um, their thing, and the other two, basically, they kind of opened and closed, um, at the beginning and, and the end of the workday. I think that the, um, you know, we talked about summer help and, and whether or not that would be something appropriate. When he said park ranger, I thought, park ranger, but as it turns out, just somebody who wants to work part-time, three hours in the evening, and by the way, that's seven, seven nights, all, every night, he said, um, minimum wage and goes around and closes them. He said, you know, by the time they get out there in the morning, you know, it's, they start about quarter after, and that's some of what we're looking to do, which is to have, you know, the parks open to our community and individuals who are, who are going there. A couple of the other ones, or one of the other ones, actually, they opened up just for events, so it wasn't like everybody had it all open either. So, there was kind of a, a mishmash in, in a couple of them as to what they do, and they did the same thing. They, um, the ones that they weren't open, um, all the, all the time in all the parks, like teams that were there all had keys and stuff to be responsible for, for locking up. But, and, and Batavia too, they had people, they actually have two parks people that work through the weekend, they're, they're on weekends too, for opening and closing stuff. So, I, you know, I, I think we've talked about, you know, what best meets our community's needs and, you know, kind of takes us out of some of the issues with, you know, who gets to pay for parks and bathrooms and all this and that. You know, if we're able to, you know, my, my recommendation would kind of be the open until dusk, um, and that would change. I mean, it gets dark later in, in September and such, and then looking to do, you know, I don't know if we call it a park ranger, we call it, you know, a part-time staff or something that wants to work some during, you know, summer hours to, to close things up and stuff. So, that's just kind of, um, and if I hear back from the other couple, you know, I'll send it out to you guys, but...
And I like the idea from like April to October, because really that's when, I mean, you know, when we get into winter.
Open and closing all the time, but...
Uh, so, like I said, we discussed this, and I think everybody was in agreement that, you know, having them open, um, for our community is, you know, something that we want to do, and so what we need to establish, this ordinance is just establish the hours in order for us to adopt it.
And I, I think kind of where I heard this kind of, what our parks are now, right? Um, yeah, well, maybe, I don't know if we want to open them quite at dawn, but, right, but, but, but kind of it's still dusk, closing, you know?
Do our orbits currently have a timer in the morning, not dawn, does it have a timer like?
Seven, seven AM until, yeah. The parks are open seven AM until ten.
Well, and that's kind of what they do there is...
Seven, that time too? Oh, okay, I thought I just said dusk.
Yeah, I think it's an option.
Suggestion, because I know you can buy locks that, that run off of a timer. So, it's possible that we can eliminate the opening aspect being done by a human by just putting in a lock that unlocks at a certain time, and then we have it set for the close time, but that's where someone would physically have to go and say, okay, it's empty lock. You know what I mean? Um, I think that would eliminate the, this till that time, you know what I mean? Uh, it, it can open up whoever comes in, but I don't know what time Parks and Rec starts, they start at eight or nine, but if that's the case, then they start at that time, that's the time the locks can physically open. And then as far as, like I said, when they close, then that's when someone will have to physically go and double check to make sure, hey, no one is in there, you know, when, when it's locked. Um, but I know we have one at Ling, or Oak Hill and Lincoln Park has a bathroom.
Oak Hill and Forness.
Forness.
Is Franchot accessible outside or just inside?
It's in the, uh, it's in the bathroom, they call the bathhouse there. So, that has to be open.
That's right.
Probably have access to get into the bathhouse and then there's separate men's and women's bathroom inside.
Do you have fun timing?
That one... That one, once you open that one, then you have two separate areas inside of the building. I may actually oppose that that one open, because of the fact that no one's there.
Well, when you say open, there's just the two bathhouses, right?
It's a, it's a, I mean, I've only, I've only been in there one time, but it's, once you walk to the door, now you're in the building, right?
So, it's not, you don't have, you don't have an outside men's room or, uh...
Right.
Yeah, but you got to get into the building, so...
I mean, uh, I just wanted to settle with those four and then...
Historically, uh, Franchot has been opened up, uh, when the pool is open.
Okay.
Because there's supervision there.
Right.
Okay, and then, uh, after the pool closes at five, if people are using the park, they can, they can, they can rent it. They can pay a fee and get, get a key so they can open up the restrooms.
So, I'm going to say, though, I think that that is one of the more used parks for kids and stuff, and, you know, anyone who, you know, has kids knows that they always got to go. Um, so I would encourage us to find a solution if we're not comfortable with opening up the, um, to look at, and, you know, maybe we need to go take a peek and, and see, but, you know, I, I think they need to have, I, I think they need to have some restrooms there. That's a well-used park for a number of people.
To answer your question, Vernon, no more exits of the building.
Okay.
It's inside.
And there's always...
You have, yeah, it's sort of whatever type of opens, but that one, you have to go inside the main lobby and they're inside there.
Yeah.
Yeah, when that one's locked down.
That's a different, yeah, you're in the rink at that point.
It's a different animal.
And then the only other one is Marcus, which is closed, you're...
Right, but I would assume that would be open during park hours, and there's no supervision.
Bathroom doesn't function?
Uh, no, it hasn't been functioning.
Or even winterized.
Would take some work, if it had functioned and had Marcus.
Yeah, I don't think it's still functioning or just was winterized and closed up.
I was just in the, um, Franchot bathroom, twelve feet or two ago, for a little league game, and you walk into the bathhouse, there's actually a lot of storage there, it's a little park hour, um, and then there's an office, and then two restrooms, so it, it is kind of a... Like, I wouldn't want my kid going in there without adult supervision, for sure.
There's a, we have assets there.
Well, yeah, we have to...
It's cheaper, I mean, is there a way to, I mean, you could look at it down the road, is there a way to put an exterior door on it? I don't know the layout of that.
I'm not sure, I can't remember.
Did you say you can just add an exterior door or something?
We only have one, uh, one restroom that is heated, and that's over here in Lincoln Park. And so, um, April first to October first.
It's probably...
You know, that may be a, at some years, that may be a stretch, we might have to close early because of weather, because they do winterize them.
Yeah, I mean, that makes, I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I thought April first was a little early, but...
Park activity on April first?
No, I mean, you were lucky for me.
Right. Um, and then obviously, we don't need this topic anymore, because we've talked about it a lot, so...
We should revive it, be it again.
I'm, no, I'm going to propose that we do from, um, eight AM to, um, dusk.
And then April first to October first?
Well, I think, let's go for, let's go for, for May.
May.
To October first or thirty first?
Well, they, what they do is through the thirty first, but...
I think I'm just going to eight, because the teams that use it at nights would have a key anyways. I mean, most people aren't the part of passing it.
Said it's not ten at night and...
Yeah.
Then you're back at like nine.
Then you're not guessing this to, you find stuff, so I don't, just say eight.
And they're like, hey, the bathroom wasn't open until dusk.
Say eight, seven or eight, they have keys to that bathroom down there.
Actually, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I, you know, in terms of looking at the electronic locks, I think we should look to see, you know, what the cost is for that, because, you know, if there's a cost savings, not sending somebody out. But I think it's a worse, worth looking into, and then, you know, we can see.
I mean, there's a local locksmith here, and I can't remember, but you'd probably buy him at Home Depot.
I'm sure.
That, they work on the wifi, not battery? I have one, it works off a battery.
Oh, yeah.
So, as far as making sure they're locked up, it's a simple solution, as it's a public safety matter, so, I mean, the police department could go down there and make sure that the park bathrooms are locked, just for a safety, kind of like an automatic lock if you're going to drive down there and lay eyes on it and make sure.
So, I think that was our concern, the automatic locks at night, is that people could be in there, you know, and everything else, so we want to make sure that they're secured at the end of the day.
We have to elaborate.
So, I think, I think that...
Darren, you and I were kids, we didn't worry about going to the bathroom apart.
I'm sure the mayor has good ideas as to how to manage it.
So, Tiffany, can you put that, uh, for, well, stuff has to be published, so...
Well, and, and I guess, Mayor, do you have any input on, on, as to it too? I mean...
I will try to accomplish what you guys want me to do. Do it yourself.
Do you, do you think? Mayor, do you think that it, it might make sense in terms of the summer help that is hired? Kind of like what Jamestown does is to, you know, I don't know if we'll call them a park ranger, but to have somebody that is more that evening that goes around and locks up?
Mayor, I got a perfect solution, what you should do is change your job description for the alderman, for we've got a locked bathroom and their work is responsible, not unlocked.
I think that you actually have some experience, so, uh...
Uh, well, I hear your jokes never funny. As I said, I will work with the unions on this, okay? You, you tell me what you want, and I will work with them on it.
Yeah, and I, I guess I should have thought to, you know, I'm sure Jamestown has some issues with, has unions, so I, um, probably should have thought to ask them if that was an issue, but it seems like that's something they do annually, is hire this park ranger for three hours, so that might be something to see if we can...
I guess I look at it, uh, from the perspective of a parent whose child just got his working permit. Um, even at eighteen years old, do you really want your child to go lock up a dark bed where people could be using drugs or doing whatever else? So, that, just sending the summer help to do that might be...
Well, that might be why they hire an adult.
Right, right.
You know, um, for three hours.
A retired adult.
Yeah, he said they do, they typically get, it's retired from parks, or this year it's a retired school.
Probably has like a CBL.
Yeah, yeah.
Lots of time on their hands.
Yeah.
Needs a little extra cash for, you know...
For the CBL.
Roll the dice.
So, we, we digress, but I'll send it back to you, Jen.
Adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Hi.
Great.